Down we do the pledge of allegiance.
For the patriots to the flag of the United States of America. And you give the public to sing us one nation under God in this little liberty and justice from.
All right, welcome. Being seven P M. We are going to open the public hearing. On the application of the joyful cup cafe for common vehicular license located at forty Blackstone Street. The Bellingham Senior Center.
I see Josie's online.
Hi Josie.
Hi, everyone. This is exciting. I loved hearing you. I loved hearing you say the name of the cafe, the joyful cup cafe.
Very nice name.
So.
So Josie, you probably don't know why you need a license, right?
Well, I know what because we're going to be operating like a restaurant.
Yes, exactly. So in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, any food service establishment with the capability of cooking, preparing, serving food with the immediate consumption needs a common big license. So we got advice from K P law and they said that they should as well get a common big. Yeah, it's a full kitchen.
I have a brief overview of of what's going on.
Oh, well, we are doing a limited menu bingo lunch starting on Wednesdays this week. And we will be serving breakfast starting on Thursday this week. We're struggling with recruitment of volunteers because we've discovered you need a lot of hands. In the kitchen and in the dining room to be able to accomplish what restaurants do. So we are we're slowly building. And we had applied for a grant to get a dietitian to help us build create recipes and do some volunteer training and staff training. And we didn't get the grant, but we got the nutrition director for the Massachusetts Council on Aging that is offering her services for free. So, yes, she had read the grant and was on the nominating committee. And told the group that she could do what we were asking for in the grant. So she's she met with with us this morning. Our first step is going to be to survey our seniors and see what what it is that they would like to see on the menu. And then she's going to help us create some favorite menu items, recipes that are a little bit more health. Health conscious in the sense of working around the chronic illnesses that older adults present with. So.
Very nice.
Yeah.
I I move to approve the common Vic license. We just have.
Wait, hold on.
Anybody have any thoughts on this? Questions, comments, concerns?
I attended their their soft opening. Tim and I were there and, you know, even and Kay did a great job. Serving us and Josie and all the all the volunteers. It was excellent. You know, it was a couple of weeks ago and I thought they did great for a soft opening. They really had their their act together, so.
It was a big learning curve, big, big.
And we have two really good chefs. We have to add the food is absolutely delicious. So when it's when we have more opening, Josie.
Yep.
Come and enjoy. It's really, really good. You won't be sorry.
It's open to the public, right?
Open to the public, very cost effective. And these are trying times for a lot of people. So, you know, there are, we know that for older adults, it's important that they get out of the house. And some people are able to go out to a restaurant on a regular. But there are many that can't afford it. And so we're looking forward to being able to get those folks out of the house and help improve their mental health.
Josie, what are the hours you're going to be serving lunch?
Breakfast will be eventually will be eight thirty to to ten and lunch will be eleven thirty to one.
Every day?
That's that's the bill. That's what we're building towards. Yes.
Outstanding.
Yeah. So we're slowly, we're dipping our toe in the water and we're taking steps forward and we'll get there.
Is there a set cost for the the people?
Yeah, yeah. And we're trying to break even. So it might take a little time with us working with the menu and figuring out. I mean, we have the startup fund, so we'll be able to see what we're we're expending and what we're bringing in and see how we can break even.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. There's no other questions, Mr. Matt Tina? Yeah, close the motion, close the public hearing. All those in favor? I just have it.
I make a motion to approve the common Vic. For the joyful cup cafe.
First and second, all those in favor?
Hey Josie, I was thinking with the Valley Tech in Blackstone and with Tri County and Frank, I'm sure you thought of this, but maybe we box to those schools, but having some of their chefs come in intern, help out, do whatever.
Absolutely. Yeah, we had, we have interim. Yeah, we have emails, initial email introductions going, so.
That's great.
All right. Thank you, Josie.
Thanks, Josie.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Look forward to serving you at the joyful cup cafe.
We will be there.
Bye.
All right, being that we have entered the public here, I'm going to move on now to the conservation commission interviews. And now we got some great candidates here. I'm going to call you up one at a time. Quick interview. We are not going to make a decision tonight. We're just going to get an interview and see, see, see who's going to be a good fit. So with Robert Devoe, come on up. Any quick introductions?
Yeah, go for it.
Bobby, thank you for your service.
Bobby, how are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to open this to the board. If anybody on the board has any questions. Mr. Spencer.
What makes you interested in wanting to volunteer that?
I guess it's. So. First of all. I've I've lived in the town for about three and a half years, but beyond that, I would consider myself deeply invested within the community because my father has been a resident for the past twenty years. But recently moved out of state and growing up here. Growing up half my time here. Spent a lot of time with him, very fond memories of experiencing the beauty in the landscape that the town has to offer. And I want to make sure that my kids have that same opportunity because I'm a father first and foremost. And I want to make sure that they have all those same experiences that I do. And on the same token, you also have to take into account growth and development of the town because if I have an expert, if I wanted an option for them to live in the town, raise their families in this town. Growth and development is a likely necessity. And it's also a necessity for many of the resources that many of us likely take for granted. Like strong school systems, D P W, fire parks, ball parks. All that kind of thing and making sure that there's stable taxes for residents of the town. And then you also have to balance that with the resources that we have in the town, limited resources such as water drainage. And the environmental impacts to these species that are actually rather sensitive to some of this development. And then lastly, open land, which we want to maintain for many years to come, for generations. For our kids, our kids' kids, so they can have those same opportunities that we've all had. And my, what really drives me is being able to steward them. So. With that in mind. I set a couple of notes as I'll get. I just.
Yeah, I gotta ask, are you, are you a doctor?
You please don't call me doctor, but technically I have a doctor.
Okay.
But I appreciate that. And so the last three to four months, I've spent actively engaging with many of the fine folks on the conservation commission at town meetings. And writing to them, expressing interests and concerns. And I've spent countless hours reviewing the regulations as well as talking with town and state employees. And wetland scientists to really understand the the general landscape of the of the issues at hand. And I realize that I'm new to local government, but I do think that I've taken considerable steps to to make contributions such as there was a vernal pool in town that I had recently certified. And doing that on my own accord, going and researching state protocols, procedures, documents. And meticulously documenting my findings to get a successful certification. And then reaching out to the conservation commission and summarizing many of my findings and what I found through these discussions and networking. And also I've done some work in smaller projects with Rob Lucier from the planning board. And these kind of highlight the meticulous detail that I can and thoughtfulness that I can bring to the conservation commission. And then, as you had mentioned, my background is in I had obtained a doctorate in pharmacy. I worked clinically at some local hospitals over the years, but currently work at a small biotech company in the more medical regulations standpoint. And these roles have required me to really review very dense regulations as well as analyzing complex data. And also afforded me opportunities such as public speaking. You may not realize it now. As well as publishing and collaborating cross functionally. And I think that many of those are parallels to skills necessary for a conservation commissioner. And I lastly feel as though I may provide some unique perspectives. Through some of my roles have required me to be more curious and scientific. Really looking at the finer details and asking why, like probably to the point of annoyance for most people. And just like peeling back the onion because you never know what you're going to find when you peel it back. It might be a little more rotten than you think. Not to say that there's any proposals that are rotten, but just as an analogy. And I'm really not afraid to have difficult conversations and navigate them. And be able to set, set and manage expectations appropriately. And in short, I do really care deeply about the town and about making sure that these resources are available for our kids, our kids', kids'. But also managing that with appropriate and sustainable development. Those are long answers to your question.
I forgot to say, tell us a little bit about yourself. You answered it.
No, what a wonderful resume, so much. You you you've published so much already. It was really great meeting. So thank you for for coming and sharing your talents with us tonight.
Same for me. I'm going to echo what Jen said. I mean, your resume speaks volumes and I know you don't want to be called doctor, but that's what you are. And I I I'm glad you stepped forward and I I really am impressed that you did so much research into the position itself on your own time. That speaks volumes. So thank you.
I think we have just to prefer. We have one position available. Right? We have three handed. So never easy. And I want to thank you and the other candidate for putting their name because it's not all ways that we find candidates that are qualified and eager that want to do this work. There are times in my career being on the board that we've had to kind of chase people down a little bit to get them to help herself. So it makes it very difficult, but I just wanted to thank you. I don't really have any questions for it because you did a really nice job of presenting your background, why you'd like to do it. And I'm very impressed as well. So and I'm sure I'll be impressed with the others not going to make our decision, easy decision, but I'll say this. Just if it may be a no for two, it'll be a no for two of you. That's not a personal thing whatsoever. What's that? That is, we're going to ask you to come back and hopefully try to find get other boards because when I've looked at all three of the resumes. Impressive, 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 all three of you and your willingness and wanting to help out the town of Bellingham and the citizens. So I encourage you to continue to look at what you can offer. Back to the community, not just to the board, but to the entire community. We've got more folks available in the cultural commission. There's a lot of help needed there. And Mrs. Altamonte is going to be hopefully joining that board here, but we still need more. There's a lot. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
May I also say, I did chat with the other two candidates earlier this earlier, and I do think that any one of us would make a great addition to the team because I think that they also care just as much, maybe even more than I do. So just as long as those, like what I mentioned is meant, then I have no hard feelings as.
This shouldn't be. But it's never easy to be told no.
Steve Coler, Conservation Commission. I just wanted to, I don't know the other candidates, but Rob has attended a number of our meetings and he's without exception thorough. And deeply vested already into the outcome of some of these proposals that come before the town. And clearly he's a person much like all of us here. Probably sees a hole or an opening and some need. And decides that instead of being part of the problem, part of the solution and puts in his time and he's definitely a digger into the details and thorough in in his application. Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else to add or?
No, again, thank you for your consideration and.
No problem. Thank you. Danielle.
Bobby should have been.
Get all a little bit wet. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. My name is Danielle Del Chinos. We have lived in Bellingham for about twelve years now. I work in nonprofit management. I've been in that for almost a decade. I work for the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts overseeing membership, volunteer support, really the people, people side of the business. Two kids in the public school system here in Bellingham and have been deeply thankful for all of the open spaces and opportunities to explore those open spaces, particularly during COVID, when it was hard to go anywhere, that there were so many opportunities to be outside and be in town. You know, similar to what I'm sure other people will echo as well. You know, there's a lot of conversation lately online and decided to look beyond the internet of how I could get involved and how I could help. And you know, to your point, if this isn't the right commission or board for me, I think that's, I'm totally okay with that and definitely looking just for opportunities to get involved in town, give back, continue to make our community better. And, you know, be involved and have a voice and meet people and work together. I think that's really one of my strengths is working with people, lots of different people. To come to solutions and figure out how to move forward, so.
Thank you. Mr. Spencer, do you have any questions?
No, no questions, just similar response. It's a very impressive resume and that share the same passion of doing positive things for the town of Bellingham. And I appreciate that sentiment very much. So thank you for you know, sticking your neck out and giving us your time. Appreciate it very much.
Again, an impressive resume and my head is spinning for so many opportunities that I can see. There's so many things that I.
You have my emails, though. You can feel free to tell me. I'm always, I'm always open to have.
Yeah, I know. I think there's so many other things you could fit in easily too. So I I look forward to meeting you further. I mean, this is the resume. Thank you so much for coming.
I'm going to echo and say thank you too. And your resume is very, very, I mean, all three resumes were incredible. I have to say, I was so impressed that we had these types of candidates coming forward. You know, and once again, as John had said, and I think Jen said, you know, there's so much out there that's available right now for positions for people that if you don't make this one, please, 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 please do not give up.
Absolutely.
Look at the other positions that are available because I'm sure you would be a good fit to just about anything.
Yeah. How many calories in a thin mint?
Honestly, it doesn't matter as long as you're enjoying. Put them in the freezer, they're even better. Sometime you'll find them in the backyard freezer a few months later.
I just had to add a little love because, you know, I'd say the same thing, but thank you. I really do appreciate the time. I have no further questions. I said earlier how I feel about the three of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
See you soon.
My this committee is desperate for. Yeah, many members, yes.
Nice to meet you.
This call just flew in and came right.
Well, I have my stuff unpacked.
Well, tell us a little bit about yourself.
All right. So I grew up in Canton and I went to Norfolk Aggie. That's where I teach environmental science and plant science. Now, I moved to Bellingham a year and a half ago. And ever since I moved in, I told my fiance, I'm like, I really want to get involved somehow with the town. We plan on being here for a very long time, making our home here. We bought a house very similar to the house I grew up in with a couple acres of land behind us, trees and woods and forests. And I swear that part of the reason I got the house was a letter I wrote saying that I would take care of the forest behind the house. Or that I moved into one of the Daigle family's houses. And I have been teaching at Norfolk Aggie for ten years. I have an associate's in landscape contracting. A bachelor's in environmental design and horticulture, and I have a master's in regional planning focusing on landscape and environmental planning as well as a master's in education. I have numerous experience with towns. I wrote a master plan for the city of Athol. Which included environmental and landscape as well as transportation, housing, a bunch of different things. I worked for the town of Dedham as an intern, working on transportation, environmental, kind of transit oriented development. And always focusing on environmental. I worked for the Department of Agriculture and Cestral Land Trust in Amherst on conservation strategies and agricultural preservation restriction program, which protected agricultural lands. I had reached out to Hannah when she became appointed. Just to say, hey, like, welcome to town. It's nice that there's like a young person getting into this job and, you know, if there's anything that you think I might be a good fit for, any volunteer or position or anything. I'd really love to use my skills get, sorry, skill set and get involved in the town. And she emailed me and said this position was open, so I thought I'd throw my hat in the ring.
Just again, very impressive, relevant history and resume. And a lot of people go with the Aggie, so familiar with how good of a school it is and good for you for going back and teaching there. That's awesome. Aside from that, no, I don't really have any questions.
I'm officially stressed out because it's. Well, these resumes, again, I'm thinking so many other spots that you would be just equally as qualified for. So I hope we find.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping to anything.
Yeah, I hope we, hopefully we can make this work for you at some place in some level, but wonderful resume and and.
I'm just passionate to be involved and give back to the town.
Yeah, that's awesome.
I feel like I have a skill set that could be useful somewhere.
Yeah, amazing. And just your passion about how you speak about what you do is is really inspiring. So thank you.
Thank you.
It's a little passion.
Same with me of it. As Jen said, that the resumes were just incredible and it's 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 wonderful to see this caliber of person. And you really do have a lot of different qualifications here. It's amazing. So thank you. Thank you for coming out. And as I say, you know, we're going to just keep these resumes and run around the town, find a good job. You, the three of you. So thank you very much.
Not usually speechless, but I am right now because I'm kind of stressed out like. You're not stressing me out. You know, it's, we've got three very qualified candidates. We don't typically get three that have this passion and about a position so important in the town. And I appreciate, I guess. That's all I'm going to say. I offline, I'm going to ask some questions because I want to find out.
You got a tree questions, ten dollars.
I love landscape design. I've done a lot of that work myself personally with some help, so it's a passion of mine. But I want to reach out to members of the conservation. I want to understand, you know, your skill set, how it might play and help the conservation commission. And I want to. Yeah, master plans. And I was on our master plan committee when we did updated. Something like that. But I would love to talk to the conservation offline just to get a general understanding of their needs before making the final decision. I just think it's important that because we've got great candidates, but I want to know what's the gap in the skill set on the committee right now? And then try to fit the right skill set with the committee.
Makes sense.
You know, that's how I'm going to look at it. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Fast appreciate it.
Out of your amazing resume, the one thing that's sticking out, what is lawn chick magazine?
It's an online blog magazine and they reached out to me to write articles for them. And I was also their content proofer. So I would read all the articles that were written for the magazine and check their content to make sure it was truthful. That's cool.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
And we're not, yes.
Just a quick comment for all candidates. The position requires, in order to understand some of the new development proposals. Position requires site visits. And this is often crashing through the woods when there's no roads, cut over walls, through thorn bushes. Summer and winter, you know, biting off the ticks. So it's something to keep in mind. It's a good opportunity to get out and crash through the woods, but you got to do that. To understand, especially the the vernal pool, as Rob mentioned, and some of the other implications that these developments are looking to engage with or replace or enter or affect. So take that in mind.
All candidates, thank you. Like I said, we're not going to make a decision tonight. I'll probably be on the agenda for our next meeting. We got room to put it on there. And to discuss them. If you're not chosen, like I think everybody said, don't get down to yourself. There's plenty of other candidates here in town that you can serve on. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on, we we need to skip over.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion to approve Mrs. Jennifer Altamonte for the cultural council.
Second. All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to name you as the Norfolk County Advisory Board Representative, Mr. Michael Hennessy.
Second.
Board of Register, Republican Representative Appointment from Mr. Dan Renary.
So, Jen.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor? Opposed? One to one.
Oh, that's me. Sorry. I was sitting here reading. I would like to make a motion to abate seventeen hundred and eighty six dollars and thirty four cents.
Second, Jen.
All right, first and second, all those in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the that we move at the Board of Slavon, except the gifts and grants as listed herein, with said expenditures spanned to the directions already noted. A seventy five dollar gift from Mr. Mark Karian to the fire card.
Second, Jen.
All those in favor? June sixteenth, meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to approve the June sixteenth minutes.
Second. All those in favor? All right. Anybody have anything for old business?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to thank Mrs. Altamonte and Dennis and all of the people who got the Fourth of July fireworks back to Bellingham again. And I know that everyone who went had a wonderful time. And I want to thank all of our our town employees who've worked them because it's never done with just a few people. It's major people being out there. So I want to thank everybody who was out there working hard for this.
I'll echo the sentiments, the fireworks were. I'll echo the sentiments, the fireworks were absolutely outstanding, band was good. Everyone appeared to be having a great time, they were festive, clothing, the whole nine yard. And I saw Dennis coming out, he was marching out some peddler, that shouldn't have been peddling this good. Doing a great job.
Standing. Anybody committed me for new business? Dennis, time administrator report.
Congratulations to the board. Big decision and uh, you know, moving forward, I think that's great, and uh. You know, I'm here to uh assist right up till the time that uh Mr. Layden uh comes in and and uh. Look forward to working with him and and uh whatever capacity um I can to, to help out, so. Um I think it's great, and I think it's a, a new beginning to the town, as I've said many times, it's fresh ideas and a new way of looking at things, and that's great. So I'll be looking forward to it as well, hopefully I get my appointment to the cemetery commission, I am going to. Submit an application.
I'm gonna get about ten people to go around. Didn't keep saying, doesn't, oh my god. It'll be, you're gonna lose it, Dennis.
It's not, I'm surprised by that.
To approve Dennis for the cemetery.
You're gonna take some pointers with tonight's.
That was funny.
But um echoing what was said about the July fourth, uh police chief, fire chief, um Joe Burton, uh the who had the, the box, uh. Phenomenal job by them, and all the firefighters, policemen, DPW workers, giving up their, their holiday to work, Rob Lucia was my, my right-hand man. Uh him and uh Bill Roberts did a great job, I told uh, I told uh, um if you guys who I said it to, but next year I'll be your Bill Roberts, I'll be the one running around. Thanks for the nudge, I know several board members mentioned it to me, and and tried to kind of kick me in the butt, so let's get this for the July and, in a nice way. Uh so I'm, I'm glad we did, uh I'm glad we were able to get back forth, it was a wonderful time and.
capable of it.
That was right. Outstanding.
And we're in for next year, we're already in for next year.
Locked in for next year. They, we, I, I looked at the state website, as far as permits issued by the state fire marshal, and the closest to us, closest community for July fourth was Acton. So the reason we have such a big crowd, we're the only ones in the area, I don't know about where that, but I don't think there's too many. Communities that do it on the floor.
But I, I heard the following night, there was someone that, I don't know, Franklin and Milford, I can hear both sides, backyard, front yard.
Be great that tomorrow, that's.
Yeah, absolutely, it's nice.
Give them the bathroom a better night, otherwise, conditions wise, that's just.
No mosquitoes, I mean, I, I was, I wasn't there all night, I got there around eight o'clock, and I didn't have a mosquito near me, you know, usually they, they like me, but. I don't think anybody else did. I turn them off.
We had a great time with the senior center.
Yeah, that's nice, yeah, so that's great.
Having fulfilled our agenda, do I have a motion to, during this meet, during this meeting, anyone to executive session?
Move Jim?
Aye.
Need for the executive session?
Yep. Alright, motion to hold executive, uh in the match general law. Chapter thirty, thirty A, section twenty-one A, paragraph two, discuss strategy sessions and. Preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct, conduct a bargaining sessions or contract negotiations. With non-union personnel with respect to the town administrative position.
Second, um okay, and I'm gonna do a roll call vote, okay, um Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
Yes. All time.
Yes.
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 Alright.
And no, um no further conclusion, um no public session.
There will be no, yep, the meeting will conclude after the executive session, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.